We do have a form. First order of business is the approval of the minutes from the April meeting. Motion. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the minutes?
Yes. Under discussion items, I just wanted to clarify that when I stated I had reviewed the report prepared by the engineer, that it was the engineer's that there were no flagrant COVID allegations.
Any further discussion on the minutes?
I've got one piece, page four or five, the top facility discussion. I recorded there in several facility committee meetings with Bob Worley. We had several facility committee meetings, including one very productive one with Bob Worley, maybe two. But this one didn't clarify. We had one really substantial meeting with Bob over there.
Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving minutes from April with those changes made by Jeff and Neil. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. My apologies to everybody who's trying to follow along, but because of some things that are going to happen, we're going to move some agenda items around. So we're going to move next to the approval of the bills and director's orders. Is there a second for that motion? Second? Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the bills in the amount of $568,298.58. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We're going to move next to personnel. Deb, would you like to speak to the principal's position, please?
Sure. I'm Deb White. I teach in middle school and facilitated the search committee for principal. We had 13 people on the committee, including myself, parents, students, Casey, and Neil was there from the board. We were given the task of looking through applicants, deciding who should be interviewed, and then last week conducted five interviews, all in one day, so it was kind of a crazy day, and made a recommendation to Tom O'Brien for a candidate, and it was a unanimous decision.
Neil, do you have something to add?
Yeah. First of all, my thanks, Deb, for corralling a large group of people. We ran a very clean, very fair evaluation process and came up with a couple of shortlist candidates, couldn't lose, and I just want to report to the board how thrilled I personally am about this particular candidate that's being recommended for approval tonight. She has a very interesting background. You can read about it in her letter. The resume is there. I had an opportunity to read a lot more detail in her application. One of the things that really resonated with me was that she has a background in business, spent several years doing that work, left to go raise her kids, became very interested in the school setting by helping out when her kids were growing up, went back to school to get that degree in education, and then entered the school system and went through a pretty rapid trajectory from library sciences into administration. And I think what facilitated that rapid transition was that background in business that allowed her to see sort of both the systems and the business operations side as well as the educational side. And I think, I'm very excited about this woman that's being recommended for you. Do you want to add something because you were there?
No, I disagree.
Going to be a great complement to your skills, Ed, and all sorts of opportunities for, you know, what kinds of demands we might discuss in terms of how the administration operates.
Tom, would you like to make the recommendations? Maybe just ask Deb to come in.
You know, we did have, she did have a, you know, all candidates had approximately, actually, in her case, about 25 minutes, and you walk and talk and tour the school. And it was pretty clear that, you know, she's, and she came highly recommended. I've talked to her principal, her curriculum coordinator, and one of her subordinates, who's a teacher leader at some length, and they're all solid in her corner, as is her superintendent, and they all echo the same thing, that they really kind of hate to lose her, but on the other hand, it's time for her to step up to the plate, and they all had every confidence in the world. I had every confidence in the world after meeting her, and if you remember, she came to one of the board meetings.
I did.
She knew about as much about about the Genes Union High School as any candidate, you know, I've ever, in any position I've ever been associated with. She really did a lot of homework. She was real smart, and everybody says she's just a real organized and efficient administrator, everybody I've talked to.
Actually, would like to add one other piece that I remember from the interview process, which was that she was not jobless, that she saw the position come up around for Genes and was familiar with the programs and, you know, frankly, some of the visionary work that's being done here, and she wanted to be part of that. So...
So I'm out with Stephanie after possibly an hour interview today, and I concur with everything the folks have said this morning. And on your behalf, I would offer her a contract for 13, 14 square meters, some of the $5,000. That's my recommendation.
So I would like to move that we accept Tom's recommendation. Is there a second? Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do you have a coach on recommend to our new personnel?
Peter, you want to?
Do you have the, was there any supplemental stuff?
Yeah, we ended up with larger numbers than we had anticipated for middle school softball, so Mary had a recommendation for a set and coach. Son, who's, excuse me, she actually works in the building through CSAT. She's working in the middle school learning center, and she started off by being a volunteer assistant with the team, so she's been, you know, right there from the beginning, and now she's kind of leading her own group, so.
Is there a motion? I agree with that. Is there a second? Any discussion on hiring Sonia Goozino as a middle school softball? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Steven? Motion carried. I'd like to move up and speak about the middle school gym bleachers. We had an email about a report. Is that something that, who wants to start that conversation? Thank you. I'm sorry, I also think this is a little...
This is a letter to Bob Worley, who's been of maintenance and operations, from Lyle Smith, who's a representative from Visbit, the school board insurance. Hi, Robert, I was able to take a look at the bleachers, middle school bleachers, last week after you had indicated that you had received an inspection report stating that the bleachers are no longer considered safe for use. After seeing the bleachers, I must agree that they have become obsolete and so far out of current play, that it's time to take them out of service. If the school decides to keep them in use and there is an injury caused by the bleachers, the report would make, the report would make it difficult to defend the school's decision of continued use. Lyle Smith, physical strength consultant. Bob, you want to add to that?
Yes, sir. Basically, the bleachers need to come out. I looked at the governing authority and who they look at for guidelines, and I read all the guidelines, about six different guidelines, codes, if you will. I read them all, it was clear, but then you need to depole. You know, that kind of makes sense based on the fact that Bob was asking for replacement. I just wanted to get some of the folks, third party, that knew, that knew the situation and the, and the bleachers to back me up, which I've done. They need to be pulled. We can chain them, but still not keep individuals off them. The answer is to replace them, but we can't do that right now. But we do pull them, you're looking at probably $12,500 to cover the heating elements behind those. So no matter what we do, we're going to incur some cost. You're going to incur $12,500 right now, plus my labor, and I enjoy that labor anyway, so I have to schedule it. But there's costs associated with that, otherwise it's, I think, was it $85,000 or $55,000 we had for the replacement? I can't recall.
$55,000.
I think it was $55,000. Maybe $85,000 was the controls I was asking for downstairs, but you know, you're going to pay now or pay later. It is really cheaper. And then I would be apprehensive, you know, once I put that, that time and labor in to pull the bleachers and putting a closure around the heating elements, and it is true, it's not the wood, it's not, it's not schlock at all. It'll look good, and I would be apprehensive in putting bleachers over top of it. I would just say, let's just make it, it's amazing for use, and folks come in there, watch the, and the pool being protected, the stand ready, launch it again. But if it's clear, there's just no debate, they need to pull.
What's your recommendation on when, when to do it? You mean, do you want to wait until summer, until the kids are out of there, or does it need to happen?
We had scheduled, because of everything else that needs, that's required to be done in the summer, the downtime, because of the facility's usage during the summer months, the windows, it's probably passed, so as soon as you guys concur that I need to pull them, then I'll look at it and I'll figure it out, but it's going to be, it's going to be out there in the future now. So I haven't had the recommendation right now.
Okay.
I had one, you know, two weekends in May, but that window is, because of the domino effect of, you know, I had, I had pulled reins in on getting them out and that affected other, other scheduled activities.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, are there scheduled activities that would have to be canceled or?
Well, not canceled, but we'll have to adapt them. And I'll look at that, and to adapt them would create lots of issues with the, with the other staff and, and I just, I don't want to manage that. I've already managed, we already have a full, a full docket for the summer, and I don't want to have to jumble all that out.
We have to replace the basketball standards.
We, we, that, I already have, I'm under, that's under control for the, for the north-south poles, the east and west poles, they have to, you can replace them, they cannot be repaired. They have to be replaced, they have to be taken out.
What are we, the basketball hoops, the backups, or the things that come back?
The whole, the whole thing, all the mechanical structures, as well as everything, all the, from the wall out.
I would just like you to take a look at, you mentioned people bringing lawn chairs. I know that...
I said that, Tom, to you.
Yeah, okay. I'd rather than we provide any seating that's available.
Anything, anything that you introduce into that gym, amazing, or having negative effect on the poor company, so I, you know, I, I'm doing...
Yeah, I mean, because I just don't understand. But you will need, if you're going to have people spectating, you're going to need to provide, until we can replace what's there, need to provide.
Can't find a statute saying that, or a, I get it, I get it, I get it, but I also understand how it could be interpreted out in the public. We asked for something, voted it down, now pulling them out, that's going to be, that's going to be a rough, I get it.
That's real, that's real.
I've said it, but there's going to be...
But at the same time, if we, we try to work with the spectators and give them someplace to sit rather than saying, you know, have to stand, you know, that'll just further antagonize, you know, the situation. So, you know, there's, you can't have elevated seating, obviously, but other events occur in that gym where you provide, we provide seating, so I'd like you to take a look at that if you could. Bob, what's...
I, I already have, and I have purchased 144 folding chairs for, for events, not necessarily for the middle school, but for, for events, and we have, we have an additional 455 to 460 chairs in the facility that we can grab. Again, that's, that's labor intensive, but if that's, if that's what we have to do, we can do that.
What's the timeframe for getting the bleachers out now?
Excuse me?
What timeframe do you have for removing those bleachers?
It'll take about 85 hours to remove them, and that's going to, I do not know the amount. I'm, I are a Q for all the labor, the bring, putting closures in, because I have a permit.
Just to be clear, you said you had a couple of weekends in May originally?
Yeah.
You don't have that window anymore?
I, I really don't, because it's going to affect the high school usage, and then the domino effect, and then, and then how I, I put my custodial staff on cleaning the sectors of the facility.
Do you have a new window?
No. As soon as you folks say that, you know, you approve it, then I'll just look at it and figure out what, what they're doing. Soon it's better, because it's, we're in violation right now.
I recommend you would, if you take whatever action you need to move, I mean, those...
Before you vote, we're not, we're not subject, we're not in any hazard of being fined or anything like that. Now, we had a very good rapport with those inspectors, and they know the work, we're trying to fix it.
Not really worried about that aspect of it.
Don't worry about it, it's not a shot.
The, the letter from our insurer is fairly crystal clear to me as to the need for these things to be taken out of service. So I'll make a motion to accept Tom's recommendation and have you do your work as soon as you can, and so does the second, if we'll decide. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Discussion Dave, do you have something you want to say?
Oh, just, replacing the bleachers, is that dependent upon the next spawn?
I, I mean, if it is, maybe you could just take out half now, so you've got some seating,
and then replace the other half.
No, I, I can't see not taking things out if we have a letter from our insurer saying that if anything happens, they won't support us.
Oh, if that's the case, then I guess you don't have issues.
No, we don't.
That really feels to this, this facility's community, so the two of us and Jeff, more like a, kind of a program that into the annual budget maintenance thing as opposed to part of the bond. You know, we'll see how that all comes together. We'll see what happens tomorrow night first. Is there any further discussion on the bleachers? Well, Jeff, go ahead. I, while I support the administration taking the action that's necessary to keep everybody who uses that facility safe, we don't know why the board would be voting on that action as opposed to other facilities matters. We're not borrowing money, this is an administrative item, it's not a board item.
We just understood the sense of the board, perhaps, but you don't want us approving
each and every activity group, so maybe a sense of the board is what you're seeking.
We certainly didn't want to do it without the board's, ah, support.
Thank you.
And that's why we were up to it.
Actually, we brought it to you, so.
We brought it to you.
So, you know, I don't, I don't, I agree with Jeff, I don't think we actually have to, to move and approve what you do on a day-to-day basis, but I would strongly recommend that you do some, if you're not going to take them out immediately, that they somehow, you know, not used immediately, because that letter was pretty specific.
Yep.
And that's exactly what I asked Peter when I talked to him, you know, I wanted to have someone tell us that they were unsafe, that it was, you know, an authority, and that that's, you know, the insurer is probably more authoritative than, you know, more scary to me than having a law, in a sense, because if it was a law, we'd be, we'd already been breaking the law for many years.
So I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. I think you're getting the support of the board for the action, the fact that we've got a backup plan, so that we will be providing some seating. I think it does speak to the public, you know, that we understand that there'll be some inconvenience, some are trying to mitigate that, and we're doing what we need to do to keep everybody safe. So that being said, we only, it's your motion on the floor, if you're unhappy, withdraw it. Motion, withdraw. What the consensus is to what you need to do?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have fun with that.
Yes, sir.
Might be some use for some of the wood.
Seriously, who knows?
And I might change the money down easier.
All right, let's finish board communications and do the graduation schedule. Who's doing that? Graduation schedule.
If I could, then just see, there was also, well, in our conversation, there was a question about the report from the auditorium, and I don't know whether that's something the board wants to address tonight or in a subsequent meeting.
What Peter's referring to is there was a letter from March from the Department of Health that looked at the air quality issues, and we focused on the results of that, but at the end of that letter were a series of recommendations that dealt primarily with cleaning of the facility, and since we, you know, won't be undertaking major renovation in the near term, we do hope to deal with heating and ventilation in the near term, but other than that, it may be allowed. I would be interested in knowing the administration's response to, how do we get, I don't know, a lot of things to be cleaned up, and so that the environment is more conducive to help you as well.
Would you like an oral report at this time? Would you, before this, the board had a written report for the next board meeting?
If it's brief, if you could just let us know, you know, what you're thinking of, that would be great.
We're going to defer to Robert Worley because what I don't feel about cleaning 60 feet up in an auditorium, speech legion's room.
I'd rather answer specific questions, you may know me by now, I, the, if you read, it's correct, if you go back, if you go to the very last page, he gives some recommendations. He gave us a, it was a good report. Y'all read it? Everyone has read it? So, you know, it was a good report, because, you know, they recognize that y'all doing a great job with what, with the tools that you have, but he recognized that we need to, you know, we need to get some professional help in here, and that, and I haven't, I read your email that you sent from Ms. Caffey. I have not RQ'd any, any costs associated with that. That's going to be solved, and I'm not afraid of that. What I am afraid of is what he mentioned in here about what we're going to find, and I cannot, if I, if I find something, I have to act on it, and I'm not, I'm not sticking my head in and saying anything like that, but I know me, but I know me, but if I, if I find something that's not code of compliance, and it's bleachers, I'm compelled to go look at it, and I'm, and I have to resolve it, wherever those chips may fall, and I'm afraid, I'm afraid of that, that HVAC in there, and I'm afraid of what I'm going to find when I get up into that roof, and then they open up a can of worms, we're going to have to take it into action, and that, and then chain to chain, that's going to be a cost, and I don't have that money right now. So, so I can get up there, I can have, now, we can do the seats, and we all, at year old, we do the carpets, and some of you have gone bad, you've been there, you've been back there, you've been back there, all four of you, you've been back there, you've been back there, also, I think you were down, it doesn't hold, right through the, through the front, I mean, I don't know what that's called, CF, term, for the stage, but I can't clean that, because if I put that, that could have fallen apart, it's going to touch it. So I need a little guidance. I don't need any guidance, I mean, I know what you do, you guys just need to be aware of, if I find something, and we're going to find something if we get up there in the air.
Yeah.
And if I hire, if I, if I hire Joan Del Elsie to come in and clean this, they're going to be compelled to tell me, we got to stop because we found an issue, and they're going to have to tell somebody. That's just the way it is.
So, Bob, when you say issues, you're talking about danger to...
I read the report, yeah. Well, I just, I don't want to tell you what I know about that plan, but I'll just read his report.
I know, I've read it, Bob.
Okay, read it.
I'm just saying, when you say you go into the ventilation system, you're anticipating what you might find. I'm anticipating what you're talking about, or I'm assuming what you're talking about is something that could be dangerous, unhealthy.
Correct.
Okay. If that's the case, I believe that in any situation where we have those circumstances, that the board's in a position where it can borrow the money without you...
Right, but remember, I've had third-party testing already, and we're okay right now, as long as I don't serve it. Once I serve it, maybe I hold it firm.
So I think we need to take this in pieces, perhaps, and so the first step would be to take that letter and turn it into some specific actions, which we're going to be talking about outside.
I can do that, I think that's just about, I can do that, submit it to, to, to the principal, who then can submit it to Ms. Caffey and Mr. O'Brien, and then they can afford the all, and they know what to do.
And it is the intent, I think, I could say this fairly, that we intend to be looking at the auditorium as part of the next phase of the board.
I agree, absolutely.
So the areas that you're concerned about are areas that we would expect to be dealing with in the near term. Neil, you have something?
Yeah, I just want to sort of compliment what I'll leave net, what Jeff is saying. I think it would be helpful to take it in steps, we're having kind of a scattery conversation about this right now. The letter's got some specific recommendations, as Jeff suggested, maybe if you could work that into your plan for how to deal with those, and also articulate in that what you think the risks are of going in the HVAC, and sort of spell those out. I really want to get past tomorrow night before we talk about any other facilities pieces, because, you know, that'll be, that'll speak volumes. If tomorrow night we don't have a successful vote, then we've got bigger fish to fry. But, you know, maybe if it works for our next month meeting, or whenever, you know, it fits with the schedule that you have laid out, bleachers, shutting the school down, getting the work going, I think it would be good to hear that, hear what the plan is, what could be accomplished over the summer. As a board member, I can't be scared of what we might find, you know, if I'm worried that I've got a really serious issue in my roof, I don't want to not touch it, because I'm concerned that it's serious, I want to go up there and try and deal with it before it gets worse. I know you know this, you're in charge of the bill.
I don't think we're scared of anything, I just, we just need to understand that we start disturbing things, we're going to find things, and we're going to have to act on it.
Absolutely, and we have been public about that from day one with our efforts to, you know, if we find attractive issues.
I'll put this in a report, I'll have it in front of the principals in two weeks or less, so they can, they can review it, edit it, and pull it on.
And can we touch that again at the June meeting? Is that good, Jeff, for it?
Thank you.
Thanks. Congratulations, schedule, Mr. Worley.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. On May 30th, which is a Thursday, we will be distributing caps and gowns. A low, low price of $22 on that day, $1.70 on the other one afterwards. That night, that evening at 6:00 in the evening at out at Walden Project is the Walden. It says graduation, but it's not a graduation, it's their completion program. And at 7:00, the Hanford Completion Program in Mount Avery, which gives me a chance to maybe get to the second half of the Hanford Completion Program from Walden. They're asking that we not schedule over the same night, six the year in a row. On June 1st is the Virginia High School Alumni Dinner. Students are welcome to attend for $5, it's a bargain. Scholarships are awarded only to those who attend. So the scholarships that are generated by the alumni will only be given if the attendees are there. June 2nd is the Baccalaureate, that is Sunday night in the auditorium. Maybe they will say prayer for us. A baccalaureate has been fairly consistently carried out by the local clergy. And our students have been participating at the rate of about a half to two-thirds of the class, depending on the year. We slipped actually under a half last year. It's non-sentarian and it is one of the, really one of the last surviving baccalaurates in the state. They're dropping like flies all the time. This is not a school function technically. This is a function in which the clergy rent our, rent our auditorium and use it for the good of our children. On June 4th is Senior Awards Night at 6:00 PM. We try to keep everything at 6:00. That's on Tuesday. It's, we have combined Senior Awards Night and Scholarship Night. And we're trying to keep it under, oh, we're trying to keep it under an hour and a half. I don't think that's possible. June 5th is DO graduation, Versatile Occupations Program. We have quite a few of our students there. They're going to be graduating down in Hillary District. And then finally on June 7th, on Friday, we have a senior apparent barbecue from 11:00 to 12:30 out back. Bob will remove the dumpsters temporarily and so we can eat with some relish and not dread.
And mustard?
No mustard. And then at 6:00 in the evening, graduation in the new gym. And I will not give, should I give away the guest speaker? No, okay. Her initials are pretty short. So, and then the kids have mandatory marching practice on the 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th from 1:00 to 3:00. And if you need, if you have any questions, anybody in the public has any questions, you can call Rose Russell, who's one of the graduation coordinators. So that's graduation.
6:00 Friday.
Everything's at 6:00. Everything's at 6:00.
Thank you, Ed.
Yes. Would it be possible, or could we think about an idea of putting our meetings into a Google Calendar so that we can see when they are, when they change, could send me messages and do other such things like that? Because we're getting, I mean, I get at the bottom of the page here all of these different meetings at different times. And it would be just really useful if it was just, you know, the regular board meeting, the special meeting we're having for this, that we're doing for that, you know, maybe the bond, something of that sort. Or maybe it's the supervisory meeting in one Google Calendar that then I could then link to my phone or other things and would get automatic updates.
We did just upgrade our AWSU website. There's a new calendar on there and I'm just learning how to access.
Okay.
Yeah, we had to redo our website to present above and below in the program itself. So it's now a Google website and Bob has converted the calendar herself. He showed me how to do all this stuff.
So eventually.
Yes, eventually.
All right, well, thanks.
Mixing things up again, and I want to go to the student representatives because I know Tommy and Lisa are in 35 minutes late for baseball practice. I want to be respectful of that.
Sorry.
Now you can go first.
So earlier this, last month, we had Williamsburg Band Trip and how they earned the success. Both the band, or all three groups that went band and jazz band and chorus took home three golds. It was pretty impressive. Also in Music World this last weekend was the Allstate Music Festival. We had eleven students from Virginia participating, staying with coach families in the GRFO area and reverting over a period of three days for about 16 to 20 hours, completing a concert on, throughout Saturday. It was pretty successful. Then prom on Saturday night, then busy weekend. And that was also successful. I'm not sure how much money we made in computer class, but it was a good time. And...
All right, and then this week, the juniors have their recap testing on Tuesday and Wednesday. And during that time, the other classes will be out and about doing something. The freshman class will be at the offer house working on PBGRs. The sophomores are going to be doing AYP testing on Tuesday. And then they're going to be throughout the community doing service projects on Wednesday. Juniors are testing. And then the seniors, tomorrow we're going to Camp to Comte, which is something that I just started doing, I guess, when I was a freshman and started doing it then. And ever since, so we're looking forward to that. We're going to be building bleachers and flowers and just getting them ready for the summer.
You hitting wood?
I already attempted that.
Maybe you could build us some bleachers.
And then on Wednesday, we're going to be performing and doing backfords again. Also this year though, we have added the Christian school. And they're going to be doing a high top Mount High one, which is in New York City. Also this week on Thursday, we're having a blood drive for the undergrads. And that's going to be sponsored, run by Mr. Powers.
Yeah, one last thing, I was around, some student council's talked about, and some friends have talked to me about adding some color to the white walls of the school. I don't know if this is the place to bring it up, but I mentioned this to the school board. In Williams, that's picture from Williamsburg. What they've done is they've given each senior, had them a brick. And then the senior bricks can reach, senior painted their brick. Anybody talk to you about this? And that was something that a lot of my friends have talked to me about and expressed interest in doing. And it might be something that the class 24th who does, or looks into next year, assuming that we get permission. So it's just, so what wall do you have in mind?
Not sure yet, but there's a lot of bricks in the school.
There are.
There's a lot of bricks.
And then you can hang it over for the next year?
Yeah, or maybe in another class, we take a different area and search for the same 38 years, whatever it is. I think there's a lot of options that we can do there.
Just, and I wanted to...
Turn the order. Right it up.
Yep. And I think that's all right.
That's it for us.
Thank you very much. Have a good practice.
Thank you.
Sure. Just by virtue of the fact that you said the juniors are having the A-CAP testing, the eighth graders or twos.
Yeah.
I didn't know if either of you have representative middle school. Do we, do we have a middle school representative?
Never have.
Do we have her?
Never been.
Yeah. That might be something we will get to.
One last thing, is this not the meeting in which we thank you for your service cases?
Oh.
Yeah.
Cheers, brother.
Absolutely.
Good to hear.
Thank you. And I did have one other question. How are the senior privileges working out?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, do I have any issues? I do say I haven't actually gotten to go out on one yet.
Really underused.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Very much.
Just following up to, you know, make sure that if it is a privilege, it's being used and you haven't heard anything, so. Educational presentation. Okay to pick up there?
I think we have covered it.
I'll be very, very brief. My name is Cookie Steph. When you came in, there were slides playing from the Savannah, Georgia trip. I'm not going to take your time to ask you to sit through them, but simply to give you a visual as to the power of some of the, some of the experiences that the, that the traveling allows our students to do. The reason I'm coming to you this evening is because the standard protocol has been, if we go to a different place, we need your permission. And this year's trip was highly successful. But in thinking about next year, we decided to request from you a West Point, Gettysburg, Philadelphia, Washington swing. Cutting the cost, cutting the distance, opening it probably up to maybe as much as 15 or 20 more students. I could fill your ears for hours with the aha moments, with the, with the huge amount of learning that went on. You know, when you've got kids, it's their first ocean. That just starts you there and you build from the wonder of that. So the request is in your package. The proposal is for the same week in March of 2014. The destination changing. The cost has dropped approximately $700 from what this year's kids paid, which would open it up to a wider audience with less fundraising required. And I was here to answer any questions the board might have and to request your permission to put us on the calendar for next year.
Somebody, um, after all? Sounds great.
It's again 16 hours a day. It's packed. You know, they're, they're in motion until late night. And then we go to bed and security comes on and everybody gets a good night's sleep. They didn't as much as move. All, all the security reports went, no activity, no activity, no activity, you know, all the way down through.
I have a question. Is there a minimum number that you need to take? This year's only, we have nine students this year?
Twelve.
Twelve students?
Basically, anything below 15 and it becomes cost prohibitive. Our largest expense is the coach and the diesel fuel to use it. You know, hotel rooms and the other things, a lot of what we do is actually for real. So you're paying about 65% of your transportation. Therefore, the more bodies on the bus, the less of the cost, you know, spread out, simple mathematics. There's little I can do on my end to trim that cost because Premier is already giving us a 55 passenger coach at a 35 passenger rate. So, you know, we have a great deal of interest this year. There's probably about 15 already knocking down my door. Ms. Taylor's saying, where are we going next year? They want to sign up, so. I would anticipate you'll be, when we stay closer to home, we average 25 to 30 students is usually what goes on the shorter trips. Because the cost becomes more conducive and the fundraising required is less usual.
So the kids are looking at around $1,400 or so a person?
Yes, or less.
And then you did fundraising last year, right?
We did.
It was best year?
It would be, it would be 13, yes, $1,400. We have one young lady that between the American Legion, the Rotary, and Women of Wisdom, wasn't able to go, that would not have been otherwise. And to be honest with you, I stepped in at the last minute and paid one student as well. So, yes.
Well, I believe the board confirms with the...
Supportive.
And we're supporting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Social Studies course proposal. Yes, sir. Back to you.
Good evening. I'm Beth Kaffee, I'm the Social Studies Department Chair. We're, we were, I don't know if you're in vice this week. Ed, last time, I believe gave you a handout articulating our proposal from the department about a need we have in the department. We are, we have to have three and a half credits Carnegie units for graduation for each student. I am looking to, usually that, ninth grade is a world cultures unit, sorry, course. Then we have US history for 10th graders. And then the third elective, the third course, so to speak, that you need to take are electives. And so you can put together a hodgepodge of different things. It could be anything from world conflicts for half a credit to psychology for half a credit. You could take AP... Current events, thank you, AP Euro, humanities. And so it's kind of haphazard at this moment. We are finding that our students have a gap in civics and economics, which seems like a huge deficit considering the world we live in. It seems to me that what a social studies student should know are your civics and economics. How does our political system work? How does our economic system work? How does the local, national, global economies, political systems play into each other? So this was really to look, so we started to talk about this in our department. And it led to numerous conversations with former students. The PBGR group, who's putting together performance-based graduation requirements. Those sorts of things, that we started having these bigger conversations and identifying what our students need. So what we're asking is, instead of having that third required elective hodgepodge is to have 11th and 12th graders take a new course called Modern Citizenship that addresses civics and economics directly. And they can take it as an 11th or 12th grader. It doesn't matter which year, but at some point, it's what they need. And so what we're looking at is just kind of shift from the electives into the more concrete. I think I have a chance to look at the proposal at this point. It was very rough. I was trying to get things together. I took departments, other members of the department, their ideas. And put them in where you can perform that. So.
I have two things to add to what you suggested. I'm in favor of it. I also would like to see maybe it be a class that an entire grade takes. And here's what I'm thinking. My experience at South Burlington was all the seniors took the same class in their senior year called Public Issues and World Affairs, PY. And it was actually the only course I had to take. So it really brought the class together. It gave us a place to talk about what was going on in the world. And it might be something that you look at as part of adding this to the curriculum. The second thing, I noticed that you put social justice in it. And I don't know if you cover that in any of your other courses, but if you could somehow find how to get people to understand the link between environmental awareness and social justice, I think that would be a very important thing to teach.
Yeah, to address that first idea with the seniors, like taking it together for a reason bond and community making. The one thing we had talked about, Ed and Carol Spencer and I, was that having seniors and their options, such as Hannaford as an option, Walden as an option. So this offering at 11th and 12th grade gave flexibility. So that's, that was the other thing we were trying to juggle and understand. And just so that it makes our learning pathways a little bit more open. But I would totally agree that it is nice to have all seniors. But I would totally agree that it is nice to have all seniors or all juniors who are going through the same experience.
Because that way you create a community. And what you're trying to do is teach how to be civic in a community.
And that's another piece of this is that the PBGR number two, which is all about being a citizen and how to be a contributing citizen in our world. And so I've already started talking with Shannon Haggett, the planning commission in town. He wants more community representative and more voice for students in those sorts of planning and board sort of negotiations to start exposing students to that. And so I've started having those conversations and would love to talk to different boards in our communities and start to have mentorships between our students and all of these great civic opportunities. And so what we're looking at is the final performance assessment would be a task where they, it's inquiry, where a student has to propose a question that they want to investigate. And it could be a civics question. It could be an economics question such as, with the police station going up and it being voted down, looking at what proposed and cons to that. And is this the appropriate place for the police station? Or is there a better, is there a better solution, those sorts of ideas? So they're looking at a problem that's real and then having a community mentor who sort of walks them through what's going on. So the hard pieces of this are finding all the mentors for a whole semester worth of students. But at the same time, I think it's about a piece of learning where they have to have some community service and mentorship right here. So those are, those are the things.
This is something we've proposed, a shift in the curriculum with Katie Cabelli recently. All right, so that was a little while ago. And it's obvious that we're a little deficit as far as every kid getting a background in economics and civics. I mean, it was a scatter shot if one got that. Becca's done a marvelous job of bringing that all together because it's been a long time coming. And so now when you see we've got a personal finance requirement, which is the only one in the state, by the way, the state's looking to make ours a model for the rest of the state. And now if we have this, which is kind of macroeconomics and civics and voting. And I don't think personal finance quite gets into banking. I think that's the no man's land between micro and macro. And I just think that this is going to create a much more well-rounded citizen. And it gives a lot more intentionality to our social studies program, which is pretty good. And this could put it over the top and I, thanks for doing that because that was a lot of work.
Good, so.
Sure.
I also, I don't know how many golfers we have here, but it was a golf tournament this weekend and it was sponsored by Price Waterhouse Hoopers. And they actually advertised that they are giving schools hundreds of thousands of dollars in order to make students more financially aware. So that might be somewhere that you can look if you're looking for funding.
So Becca, the idea is that this would replace the elective. You're required to take an elective here, there, there, and you just replace that with this class?
That's the trade-off.
Yeah. So that way you're not tapping, you're not dinging some other piece of, you know, a kid's program.
Exactly. So it would be replacing all of those electives, which are wonderful because they provide such a variety and give students a lot of choice, but we just feel like this need is there. They would also, we would also still offer some of the higher level electives such as APs and humanities. But it is cutting into that elective.
But it seems, I mean, I love the content. I almost think some really forthright discussion with Steve Borzak to create a bridge between his class, which is usually sophomore's, right? I mean, to prerequisite the two, to prerequisite this with that could be powerful because you guys can make a really neat.
And he's part of our department technically, so he's been part of this conversation from the get-go. And if he gets a go-ahead on this, we'll be working this summer. We're funded by the Nellie May extra money that was received by Christine. She's put that in because we're working on the PBGR task also with this. We're getting funding for that, so we will be working as a department to put this all together and a visa curriculum so that it will be together, not with this coming fall, but the fall after. So that when we start, we're ready, fully put together.
And then you bring up that point, said this is the first course that's been designed specifically with PBGRs in mind. Everything else, we're adapting PBGR to the course. This course is designed around the PBGR process. So it's kind of, it's kind of like, I'm getting something really cool.
I love the idea of attaching a student in each class to some local board, be it planning commission, regional planning commission. These young men and women who sit here, you know, and listen, let's go on and on. They should get something for that.
And it's so good to get them started and involved early because then they become more comfortable and it's less intimidating when they are 18, voting, trying to make decisions.
Is this a voter consensus?
I think we need change credits. I think maybe Russell will.
Okay, no problem, right. Is there a motion?
Can I ask a question? Have you guys decided what you're going to learn this year yet in terms of concepts that we're offering now?
There were some cuts made this year. We have three social studies teachers and Steve, who's half social studies, half tech. So we've had to make some cuts because scheduling becomes really difficult. We're a small department that offers quite a bit. And so those are conversations that guidance had and administration had. And I was part of to a certain extent and in anticipation of this course coming. I also will, I'm thinking the students, it would be great to get their input over the next few weeks over what courses they would like to see stay, just so then we can start to move forward with that for next year's scheduling.
So are there classes that students have signed up for for next year that might not happen?
No, all of those are in place. This is for the next fall.
Any further motion to approve the course?
As a required credit.
As a required credit. As a required credit, so that means the same size of class as say a math class or a French II or AP.
It would be a credit one semester, so it's every day for some five minutes.
Yep, so just like AP later.
Well, no.
Integrating.
But they take regular standard.
US History.
Right, or world cultures.
Yep.
So the junior class this year would be required to take that class in the last year? Is that what I heard you say?
No.
It would be the first.
Sorry.
No, I'm going to do the math.
Because it wouldn't be ready by this fall and the schedules are already, it's probably. So we have a motion on the floor, it's consecutive, to approve this course proposal as required. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on the mobile, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Post? Sustain, motion carried.
Thank you.
I'm glad we put it together.
Thanks. It's always fun.
Athletic policy changes. Is that clear?
Is there a view?
Is there one?
So in your packet, you should have for the current policy in regards to the substance abuse. And in there highlighted in yellow, kind of a small tweak that we're looking to make and the reasoning behind that before, you know, Eric speaks is the current policy. If you're caught breaking the substance abuse here, you know, depending on what statute or for second or third, you're held for a certain amount of games. And during that timeframe, the way the policy reads is you're also held from practices during that time. You're basically, you know, shunned from the team while you're serving your suspension. In some cases, depending on when you're caught, that can be a month, you know, a month and a half. To some cases, as little as a week. So this year we had a student who is here today to talk to you who was in that substance abuse and he came to see Mr. Webly and myself following the suspension. That was handed down not to appeal the number of games that to be missed, but to appeal being away from the team and had reasons why being away from the team in his mind and his team had come to see me. And in their mind, why having Eric outside the team for a month and a half wasn't beneficial to him. And that's where, you know, Eric came to present some stuff. And part of his, you know, processes to present to you guys and explain to you why for him and for other kids, that piece of not being allowed to be part of the team when they're serving their suspension is something that we're looking to that possibly change. So I'll let Eric talk and we can go forward.
Great. So I wrote a little thing here saying, what does lacrosse or being on a team mean to me? I want to start off with saying hello, school board, superintendent, principals and student rep. My name is Eric Abel. I am proposing a changing a rule. When athlete is in trouble, their consequence is to serve three games and miss all the practices prior. I am asking if there can be a change to remove the student from the three games depending on their situation. However, but however to allow them to continue to practice so they're not shunned from the team, but they're there and so they don't get severely hurt when they come back if they can't be at practice. My rationale around that is that everyone learns essential skills in different environments. The classroom, playing field and the community all play a role in determining how someone holds themselves. The classroom provides information for my success. However, it does not allow the interaction of friends to happen. On the field, I learned to trust my teammates, we're all brothers on and off the field and to deal with the problems and to hold myself to my guiding principles. I know that my actions off the field determine and reflect who I am on the field. One day my athletic career will come to an end and I'll be left with memories. But however, when a kid is not at practice, they pretty much aren't there. They're not getting chemistry. They're not there to support their team. They're just shunned away. So I'm just looking for a change in that. But to serve the three-game suspension is very reasonable in my mind.
Thank you, Eric. Well done.
Love that. Thank you.
One of the issues here is that, I'm speaking as a coach. Three things have come on. Eric has dropped tobacco. That was the sin. And there's three aspects to this and I'm sorry if I'm kind of, this is probably what you were going to say, but there's three things that are really going on. One is that the headmaster, the Vermont Principal Association, athletic rules and this particular rule dovetailing this one. He needs 10 practices to get eligible, all right? If he can't practice for X number of weeks, it grows because he can't get his 10 practices in. So he's never eligible until halfway through the season. That's number one. Number two, the last thing you want a kid who has a propensity to smoke a cigarette or dip some tobacco is to give him more free time in the afternoon to do so. And what you want to do is reel him in and have him with his role models and his colleagues and his coach contributing to the common good. And I think the third thing Eric brings out is that it's a healthy alternative to being shunned. I know as a coach, and this is my third point, when I was a wrestling coach and I had a kid break training, I didn't want him away from the wrestling mat. I wanted to just absolutely make his life miserable for the last three weeks, you know? I mean, we do, you know, monkey drills and shark bait and everything until, you know, the cast came home because he needed to get in better shape because he broke in training. And I think that it's a commonsensical thing to allow a kid to practice and to disallow him to compete. Is there anything I missed?
No, I think to echo what you're saying, I mean, number one, you know, like you brought up the ten practices as a BPA rule. And when you get caught, if you get caught breaking that violation, you know, it extends things out, but that's a choice, you know, that's made by choosing to, you know, do whatever to break the substance abuse. But the main point in this and what I got, you know, from Eric when he came to me is, you know, look Pete, here's the deal. I need to be with my team because my team's going to hold me accountable. They're going to make sure that I'm not going further and doing the things that I shouldn't be doing. If I'm not with the team for the next month and a half, I can tell you right now, I'm not going to have the support that I need to not do it again, you know, not fall into that. And that was the same thing I got from this captain. Look, having served a game, suspension, whatever, having served extra games, but we want to keep an eye on him because we know that if we're not there with them to help and guide him down, you know, the right path, the chances are he's going to go down the wrong one. What can we do here? You know, and that's where we made the decision, Ed and I, to allow him to practice during that time, serve the games. And part of that was to come here and express that, you know, to you guys. So whatever you understood, it's not about trying to get out of the games. It's not about trying to get out of the suspension. It's about using that team as a support system. And right now, the way the policy is worded, it doesn't allow that team to be the support system that some kids, you know, in this case Eric, can need. And that's what we're looking to have your support to change.
So Peter. Since, you know, if students who are team members and are reporting with you or possess tobacco, alcohol or drug or refer to you, which may result in these consequences in addition to those in your handbook. So what does the handbook say? Because the policy as it reads appears to give you some discretion.
The handbook is what I printed out there for you when I sent you. That is.
Describe, okay, so elsewhere in the student handbook. So what are the other consequences described in the student handbook? I'm sorry, I don't know.
I think that would fall under, Ed and Pete, in terms of, you know, drinking and being suspended from school is my guess. I don't know.
See, I'm just, I'm reading the words on the page and I see there's some discretion given specifically to you to, you know, read out the situation and decide how heavy-handed to be.
Yep.
So I'm wondering whether by removing these words, that that then removes for you a tool that you may in some odd instance, and I understand what you're saying, but, you know, you don't have to do this. It says you may do this. If you come into a situation where somebody does something so egregious that you can't have them interacting with the team or thinking of some outrageous situation, maybe you need the ability to say, oh, I'm sorry, you can't come to practice. I'm sort of playing devil's advocate, you know?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I think there's always that flexibility, you know, with it to, you know, make a decision to see fit. I think in this case, it's, you know, what we're looking for is to, here's what it is. You know, here's the, you know, the minimum that you got to go with. And then if we want to extend beyond there, you know, obviously there's that new ability to do that. But, you know, maybe we don't need to necessarily change anything.
And I don't want you to get the wrong idea. I totally understand what you're saying about, you know, the kids need to be working out with the team, exercising, practicing. But I'm just reading that the policy as it sits does appear to give you the flexibility as to what to choose.
First word, man.
Maybe you mind reading it?
I'm.
That's my second.
Yeah, we're.
Bottom of the first paragraph.
Second lesson.
So while you're reading that, I'll just, I'll take the other side of the argument. And that is that, you know, without that detail in there, you still have maximum flexibility. So with it in there, with the detail in there that all practices must be met. So with it in there, with the detail in there that all practices must be missed, puts the burden on Peter to say why he doesn't have to miss those practices. So I think if you take the detail out, that gives Peter more flexibility to make the decisions and gives him the responsibility or allows him to exercise the responsibility with greater flexibility.
So I'm thinking, I see a word tweak that might meet what you're saying. But I'm thinking of a situation where a student arrives in a severely compromised state and puts his teammates into, you know, a significant safety hazard potential. You know, maybe wielding a knife, maybe being crazy, maybe on the wrong substance. And so you just can't have this guy around, although it's the first, you know, instance. Obviously, that's violating other rules in the handbook. Maybe the tweak is to say, "And may include all practices during that time," which allows you to think through, you know, where you're taking tobacco or where you're, you know, completely inebriated and being unsafe to yourself and your teammates. Because I think in the end, it's really, isn't it up to you as the A.D. and the coach to, you know, read out the situation and decide the appropriate level of consequences?
Yep.
So just take it out. And because it says 25% of the events during that activity, so why do you have to further define one of those events?
Events, events could be a practice.
The event is a game, the event is a practice, the event is fundraising, the event is tournaments, the event is anything that has to do with that activity.
You're right, you're right. Just take it like...
And make it period and, you know, why call out one and not all of the events?
Tell me the other one.
Well, just, I think reading has been that the event is the actual game as opposed to a practice.
Well, and in this case, I mean, that's clearly defined because it's the events and all practices during that time. And for some, you know, it's an entire season. And for others, like, it could be as little as, you know, a week.
So I'm going to call on my experience as a contract administrator. If you want a word to mean something, then you define it. If you don't want it to mean, you know, if you don't want it to be defined as a specific thing, you don't define it. And then it's up to the responsibility of the individual to define it. So either define what event means or make a general.
Right, and I think that's basically what you do is, you know, what I had highlighted if people have a size or state now, you know, so to go back to what you just said a minute ago is, and, you know, right there, quarter of the events during that activity, period, end of story. And then, you know, we read the situation to define from that point what that activity, you know, has to be, whether, you know, it's a game, practice, you know, make the call from there where it's not as defined as it is right here. And then we're in that gray area or, you know, have to read the situation in this case and adjust it compared to that case and adjust it, you know?
Yeah, so if an event is not defined, then...
We're on this Pete's consequences and following my consequences, which is, for instance, if drinking is a 10-day suspension, reducible to a three-day average suspension as long as they agree to see the drug and alcohol council. So that's three days you can't practice anyway because you're not in school. So I mean, you know, you could see a circumstance like this one that would eat up most of the lacrosse season, whatever the other. And, you know, and I thank you, Eric, for doing this tonight because I think that's a brave thing to do. Appreciate it.
Is this a high school, middle school, high school only policy or is this S U Y?
I couldn't tell you what the element is.
This is in our handbook, is it the district policy?
Where I was going with that is if it was district-wide, we really couldn't take action on this. It would have to come from the S U board.
This is specifically high school.
There could be an implication on days when we have in-school suspensions and kids are, they can't play in a game because they're not present for class. The question is whether that would also apply to practices in that setting. So I don't know whether it's lengthy or whether that's a conversation we need to have. But it's the same kind of reason except for the particular events.
How about the discussion that Peter ended, that he would have heard from you. They go back to the longboard and back to changes those suggestions.
I was kind of thinking that myself. Everybody in agreement?
Yeah, just one other comment. I don't think anybody here that doesn't know Eric would wonder about if you knew what he does. He's the goalie on the lacrosse team. So he in effect stands up and lets people throw balls at 100 miles an hour at him. So I think he's very brave as an athlete and now I see him being very brave as an individual. Thank you, Eric.
Alright, we'll look forward to seeing the finished product.
You sure?
Oh, please.
Sorry, can I add to your comment in saying that Eric, part of the whole process, whether you had considered the policy change or not, the expectation was for him to come and make a presentation to you all and step up in regards to verbal in a different arena and come out feeling like a winner. So this was a good opportunity for him to do. And I hope to have more students who are finding themselves in trouble be able to make a presentation, holding them more accountable to their words. In this case, it was three captains who came and found me in the morning down in my classroom. I'm hard to find. They came and found me. Eric didn't. He was taking the consequence knowing that he deserved it. They came and found me and said, "Can we do something about this? Can we look at how we can keep a player with us? Because we know what it means to him to be part of us and what we can give him as far as support." So the more peer-reviewed support that happens around here, that peer's justice is really critical. And in this case, it was played out and it's kind of the PPGR way of doing things around discipline as well.
Thank you.
Just a quick, I know, I'm not going to tell mine, just kind of talk far. Jeff Coffman, the track coach, is very against suspending people from practice for all the reasons that you guys were talking about. So what he has done in the past is he works with them outside of practice. But the problem with that is he was single, now he's married and he doesn't have a kid. So, yeah, he wouldn't want us to practice.
We look forward to seeing the final proposal in June. Principal, you want to go first?
I'll go. Thank you. Some, thank you, sir. First, this is a stressful time of year in the school. A lot of things going on, a lot of pressure to get things closed down. And I want to offer thanks to Tom and to Deb, the work she did. Deb, the process, to work this process as quickly as they did. The decision, it's important to know that we're principals and that part is going to... They add different anxieties, but at least it's a little more known than it has been. It's definitely a valuable enough initiative process. We have the kneecaps coming up tomorrow and Wednesday. There's a number of other testing. We've had AP tests going on for the last week. Susan Dunn, who's a para who works with us, has done, has done, is done. Is also the assessment coordinator for the high school. And if you take a look at the map of the building here over the next couple of days, we're going to be finding spaces to give the assessments because of additional requirements based on I U Ps and 504 plans as to who needs to be tested separately and under specific testing circumstances. Makes this a, an honor, it's an honorous task to put this together. And we're really appreciative that we are able to have someone who can do this and is organized enough to do that. In addition, once again, the parents group has shown their support for the, is showing their support for the whole assessing process by preparing special snacks over the two days. This time it's only two days. Then in the fall, it's even harder. But it makes a significant difference to our kids to see that parents care enough to step up and do something special for them at the same time as we're asking them to step up and do something special for the school. Not all of us support the tests themselves, but we have to support the process now. It's another community effort that's really valued. In addition, as we added these activities figuring that the kids who are being assessed are doing a community service, that we have a community service activities that Lee Shorey has taken, continues to take a leadership effort on and has created activities that these kids remember, that the communities remember and the individual specific around camp to come to things of a larger community benefit from. I'd just say it's a remarkable process and I don't know if Eric gets enough publicity. The 18th, next, this Saturday, the Environmental Club and the junior class, I think it's a junior class, are support, have been invited by Addison Waste, Solid Waste District to host an E-Waste Day. And it's going to be here in the parking lot. What that means is while they provide some of the labor, whoever it is in the state that comes to collect all of, any, basically it's anything with a cord is what I've been told. We'll see how that pans out if people show up with lamps and things.
Peter, that's for the senior class and it's supporting project graduation.
Okay, so senior class, so part of it is the seniors and the other part is the Environmental Club and which is, I think they're targeting to support the composting project. So those two groups are working together and...
Is there some kind of, are they charging money for it or?
No, no, they're buying this, they buy the pieces.
Ah, okay.
Are bought in some way.
Right, okay.
And that...
Yeah, no, that's, I know that part, that's why I asked.
That's where the fundraising is. It's something special that we've been asked to be able to host this. And it's open, normally it's restricted to the local town and now they've opened it up. It's not just the town or the county, but anybody. So if you've got any businesses that have, that are hoarding things or storing things that don't need anymore, we'll make a... On June 4th, for the third, this is the third year, we're celebrating middle school scholar leaders. It's a fascinating process in that we, every crew in middle school, eighth grade crew, nominates one of their members as a scholar leader. Those kids, those 12 are brought to the, to a faculty meeting plus other kids, that teachers still felt the significance of our views. And we have one of the best staff meetings of the year when we sit around and talk about kids who have done remarkable things, noteworthy, and we have to select them on those nominated. Two of them to represent the school. This is sponsored by the Vermont and the New England Middle School Association and the Principals Association. It's only a black, it's only a dinner, but it is such a great process for the school and an opportunity for us to recognize scholarship and leadership and celebrate not only the two who are selected, but all those kids who are nominated by their crews. And teachers have talked about the kind of conversations that happen through it. They really had it. Capstone completions are also that same week in June. We'll have to get on the calendar what specifically. So I think it's the 4th in school and then the, I think it's the night of the 6th of June that there'll be capstone displays. Kids are doing a nice job of working on this. We're all learning from the process. I did hear a complaint today that they didn't like being the first class to do it. But I pointed out if they went in first class, they'd never be able to do it. If it wasn't a first class, they'd never be able to do it. And I at least have left them thinking about that concept. It will be interesting as we continue. I mean, I think the kids are, as usual, are buying into the process. However, there are kids who will not be completing all the events by June 7th. And those kids will not step up to everyone else involved in conversations with family. But we're staffed during the summer to come back and there's a month when they would be able to complete their project. I'm hoping, hopeful that all of those will do it during that time. The question that would be stated clearly that completing a capstone is a requirement to step up. So we'll see what happens.
So you said June 6th in the evening, there's a...
That rolled out.
So if you happen to have a middle school student participating in this, that's something...
For all, that would be for all of them. Specifically, it's every grade kids who are leading something to the other.
It's public.
For public. It's about, there'll be more written information about that. We didn't talk about June 10th, which is another shift. June 10th at 1:30 is underclass recognition. In the past, this has been an evening event. Am I right? We're still on this?
Yes, yes, Peter. I'm just amazed at how many high school initiatives you're covering. I appreciate it.
Makes it easier.
It comes from the part of the underclass. And so that is a good, that afternoon. And you'll get more of the explanation about what the class is likely to do around that. The last thing I wanted to point, you can clearly take that. And the other, the other is...
Test saber of the interaction.
Yep, the other thing I would like to point out is that it's not something we often have conversations about. But there are a number of toxic cleaners that are used to keep any institution, any large building clean on his own initiative because he thinks it's the right thing to do. Bob has made some significant efforts to bid the cleaning closets and the building of these toxic materials is using. Has found ways to get people to loan us equipment to use ozone, ozonation to energize its water to do some cleaning. They've had the toxic materials before and they therefore celebrate.
Oh, three.
Thank you.
Peter, I have one question. You mentioned about there's a subset of eighth graders who may not step up and they'll have the summer through the sale program. I'm assuming it's a sale program in conjunction. What kind of continuity is there going to be with those students on your departure? Are you going to pass the baton to Stephanie or what do you anticipate?
Certainly, we hope that this is something that, that particular announcement has just occurred. And I would certainly hope to be available to do that. However, the kids will already be part of sale. Deb White is the teacher that's going to be working with those kids. So the continuity is...
I was just looking for a little reassurance there.
And I'm sure parents are going to be asking the same thing as I have conversations with them. Actually, I would hope they'd be unsettled about it enough so that they would complete their capstones before I go. They may not have to worry about it.
The paradigm that we learned about was when Colchester High School made their, their exit ticket on freshman year, a writing to a standard. And they had, I believe it was over, Bill Ridgeway told us, over twenty kids did make it. Parents were out in arms, saying, oh my God, oh my God, the kids gotta go to school all summer. And most of them complete, almost every single one of them completed it within two days. You know? And so we're assuming that that, that our kids aren't that much different. And perhaps that will happen here too. But that's the reality, it's just once you realize your summer is gone. So there's a different work ethic.
But they're gonna eat what?
They are going to eat great, and which is miraculous. And that, and that really introduces a new paradigm for high school education. One is, you know, flexible pathways philosophy is going to demand that we keep open summer school opportunities. And as the funding for that dries up, we're gonna have to get creative and figure out either by contract or by, you know, or by other means, we're gonna have to figure out how to get more flexible to provide instruction during the summer. Nancy does this miraculous job of kids who just need to catch up to get to where they need to be in math. And how many weeks does that go? So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that, you know, we need to be able to guarantee to our constituents. Anyway, I just thought I'd point out that's, that's really coming true. Just a note from the front, the educational quality standards are, are going to be, we're gonna have one more meeting on them and send them to the state school board. And as soon as I get the, the redrafted standards, I'm going to send them to the board electronically. See what you think. There, there are some radical things in there. There are some real changes. Not so many inputs, you know, we're not talking about how many square feet each kid needs in a classroom. Instead, we're talking about what, that for instance, every high school student has to have, A, a blended experience somewhere where they use technology and instruction. Another one is that they need to have all the majors in some form every year of their high school education. Right now, you could have, you can skip your math, you can just do three math. Nobody around here does. But you could, or, and so on, you could do three years of social stuff, you know, three point five. And it's saying that somehow, in an interdisciplinary manner, you have to be, you have to be learning all the core areas. And I think that's very cool. Things like that are radically different and cause people pause. I'd like to talk more about our kids. And I just, I'm always struck when I, when I go, when I go to Fromm, how great our kids are. And sometimes I think it's something I did, and then I realized better because they were great years ago when I got here. And it's really remarkable to see our kids at Fromm. It's really cool. And I'm not gonna name any names, but for instance, certain people were dancing with one of our wheelchair bound students. And he had about as good an evening as I think he's probably had maybe. I wouldn't name any names or point looking at any directions. But the, the level of kindness and of, and just clean fun that was going on was pretty remarkable. And it's humbling to be around so many good kids and from every walk of life in this part of Addison County. It's really remarkable. I'd also like to talk, just briefly, about, we had a DPA Hall of Fame banquet two Fridays ago. And Roland Gaiet from Virginia's went in to the Hall of Fame. And Peter brought him there and June Sargent was one of the movers and shakers, our elementary principal, to getting him in. She's a executive council member. It was really a proud moment. And his speech was reflective of the Virginia community in general, how we value kids. And it was really pretty remarkable. Just as a sidebar, my eighty-six-year-old football coach was there. And my eighty-two-year-old freshman math teacher was there, who still claims he still has a bruise from Roland elbowing him in the chest going for a rebound in Hayrow, New Hampshire in nineteen fifty-something. But it's really remarkable, maybe if you ever get a chance, if you ever get a chance to go to one of those, it's really, it's really great. What was I supposed to fill in on, Peter? You started?
It's happening on June tenth.
Ah, June tenth.
In the day?
In, in the day. We've always had underclass, underclass awards at nine, and underclass sounds kinda bad. Means freshman, sophomore, junior awards, ninth, tenth, eleventh grade. And every department hands them out. They hand out one is a, one for achievement, one for challenging oneself, and one for meeting all five guidelines in every department, in every grade. And we have no idea if we're gonna be able to get through it. We're trying to do something electronically where we're gonna have a running slideshow of the kids, their best years, their accomplishments. And back of them, just as the teachers read off the award winners. The reason we're moving into the day, because we're award, we're giving these kids awards, these students awards, in a vacuum. None of the other kids see it. Its effect on other kids, on younger kids, is minimal because they never see it. They, some of them, they never even hear about it. The drawback, it may be that we don't get as many parents, although we sent out postcards to every, every parent, I think. Is that true?
I think it was, it was an email, it was a message that about every parent postcards that didn't go. I'm not sure if they all.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they all, but anyway, so it's gonna be in the afternoon at one thirty on the tenth. And the big, actually it'll be in the auditorium. And because we, or is it, are we still fighting over this?
We're still fighting over that.
It may be in the auditorium. It may be that the middle school still has something going there, but, you know, he's, he's a short timer. We really don't need to kowtow to him anymore. But that is a change, and it's definitely, we're definitely gonna get a little flag for it. Every time you change something, you get some flag.
This, over the time I've been here, and it's largely because of stuff that has promoted, is that these recognition ceremonies have become so much more student-centered and student-sensitive. It was always an award to a kid, but it was only, it was only those kids being awarded. And the same thing has happened with senior recognition as well. And I, I heard after the senior night, when we started with a morning meeting teacher, they celebrated the ten or twelve kids that he or she knows well and speaks about them from four years of knowing that kid. A parent came back and said, I finally understand why you have morning meeting teachers. Because someone who knows that kid really celebrates them at the end, and everything gets celebrated. That's not the, the underclass awards recognition, but it's all part of the same framework. How important we really need to practice, how important every kid is.
And that's looking forward to the day when we have parent-teacher conferences that are, that are facilitated by a morning meeting teacher and just offer evidences from the academic teachers and concentrate more on the PBGR portfolios than actual going in and checking and see how, you know, Susie's doing in, you know, biology. And so, I mean, we're moving rapidly toward a much more student-centered world. And this is one of those steps in the change. That's all I have. I've talked too much.
Um, just a couple of things to remind you of, the vote tomorrow evening, or tomorrow. The SU meeting on Wednesday, attendance is encouraged. And I also wanted to thank those members of the board who took time to respond to Senate Finance Committee and the potential actions that they were considering in H five thirty-eight, which had to do with. Changes to law that would directly impact, I think in a negative way, education law and specifically the funding system. It did cause, I know some of you got responses, I got a response from the chair of the Senate, the President's Committee, saying they would unlikely take any action in this session. So we're still watching, but it appears to be slow things.
Did you get a response?
Yes.
You did, you did?
Yes, I got a pool of eight responses, but only two of them were meaningful.
I sent my, to my local people, not the chair, you, but I didn't get.
I didn't get any response.
I sent it to the entire Senate. Well, I saw what you did. And I saw what you did, you just don't know.
I took the time, I took the time to make a distribution list of their legislative addresses and their secondary, and in some case thirty, you know.
All right, good man.
So they all heard from me. And like I say, I got nine responses, eight or nine responses. Most of them were, I get a ton of emails, I read them, and I'm gonna take action, it's important to me. But, you know, it could be weeks before I respond to you, but I did get two meaningful responses. And I think Tim Ashen.
Specific issue, I didn't.
The, the items that they were looking at, you are familiar with the two vote question. They were looking to repeal its sunset, so to keep it in place. They were looking to reduce the excess spending from one twenty-five to one ten percent. Budget cap, we were proposing a budget that would be a cap on the budget increase of one percent plus inflation. And that would require, if it went above that, it would require a six percent super majority vote. Required vote on the budget of twenty-five percent of the registered voters. And in fact, it happened, we would revert to the budget from the prior year. And the final one was a topic they've been discussing for several years, and that is closing up the student's grid. So they were directly, I will, funding system, I think there was a curve. Last thing I want to do is again, thank the committee, search for Peter's replacement. Committee did awesome work in a very short period of time. Scheduled, scheduling and contact to my able assistant, Larry Martin. I think Deb's leadership of the committee was outstanding. And caused us to be in position to work as of today to hire a highly qualified person at this time of year. I have to say, I'm amazed. And one good thing about Stephanie is that she had one idea in mind. And if that wasn't gonna work out, she would remain up to the thirty-two severe health portion.
And she wants to. Is that it?
That's it.
Kathy.
So I have the audits for four members, three are eleven.
Audits.
Actually, attention, we never review the physical eleven, so we would take those home and we'll audit. We do that at the June boardroom. And I will also have the F R T draft audit at the June. Our auditors now don't do any audit work between the beginning of January and April fifteenth. So we kind of have to, we have to, we have to. So you can hear, each take one of these, and then one of these.
So you're gonna put these together for us, which, which part are we on? Are the kids, it's pretty evident what it is.
Well, I don't know, it's just where the best people.
Right.
So there's a financial report. There's an additional required report.
Yep. And then these two letters are.
Then there's two letters. So this would be like a government audit standard report and additional report. And then internal control report.
Okay. So these letters are summaries of what's in the actual findings?
These are the recommendations, these are required. Alright, so I'm gonna go over first this projection that I've done and then a review and estimate is. And this is preliminary, and I'll leave my best judgment on this. So looking at revenues, we received to date revenues of six million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have yet to receive education fund payments, and those are basically practice test payments. And we will receive those due now and in June. And those are final numbers, we have plans to, obviously. The Hannaford on behalf payment, that's a journal entry I'm told to make. We don't have a final number on that, that contingent upon when the legislature decides to help. We don't have a final number, but it is the same number in revenues and expenses. And then I'm estimating that we still received about four hundred thousand dollars in special ed reimbursement. And that might, that could be a higher amount. I think about four hundred thousand dollars should be with the act day. We've already received to date about six hundred thousand dollars. Last year we received about a million dollars in reimbursement, so I think that this number could be a little higher. So just as an estimate, as of right now, that our revenue is to be about nine million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Our expenditures to date are eight million, six twenty-four. We have enclosures that are mainly salary related, so it'd be salary, social security, and then municipal retirement for those employees. So that's nine hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. And then I just estimated from here on to the end of June, benefits, we have to accrue July and August benefits for teachers and other staff, so it's going to be ninety-five thousand dollars. We still have to pay the tax anticipation interest before the June is verified. We have some lease payments and no payments for, for solving the month of June, that would be four thousand, two hundred dollars. And estimating our utilities will be twelve thousand dollars during the month of June. And then there's the Hannaford payment. So if we don't spend any other funding on anything else, it's going to be about ten million, two sixty-three. And expenses, our deficit, eight hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Now, just to compare this to our budget, we had budgeted nine million, nine thousand dollars. So we will be taking in more revenues from that, mainly in special ed reimbursement, of about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Quick question? Sorry, not yet.
How quick?
Did we not anticipate that special ed service that we had to provide and therefore the reimbursement that we're getting when we made last year's budget, or a year to have it? No, we did anticipate it or we did not?
We did not anticipate.
Okay.
So then our budgeted expenses were nine million, seven hundred thousand dollars. So we are over budgeting our expenditures of five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, estimated. Now, the deficit in our budget, so we had a prior year surplus that was estimated of six ninety-three. So, so what would happen in our budgeting process is that we had less revenues that we needed to raise because we had a surplus. So what this is saying is that we are. So what this is saying is that we are going to be over budget in an additional deficit situation, like that hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Now, you'll notice that I said, we aren't going to spend anything else in any other category. And I'm sure we do have some other expenses that we need to incur. We are under a budget stage, so I anticipate, you know, that we have one month left, a month and a half left, and anticipate that we really don't have to, um, spend a lot more. Question? I'm asking for you. I mean, this was just quick, I mean, you know, I'm sure there are expenses that we do need to pay for, um, and, and just to take, um, just to go now to the different app that I gave you. And so, we have our balance sheet, this on top, and in schools, the revenues are included in the balance sheet, so there in the middle of the page there begin our revenues, where tuition and interest. So we'll see, I mean, we pretty much can tell right now, some items that we might not may budget on, for instance, we budgeted forty thousand for interest income, we've only made eighteen thousand, so we're not gonna make the balance of that from now until the end of June. Athletic receipts were over budget, and facility rental under budget. The local assessments there are flowing in three forty-nine, if you go down a few lines to state that funds, we need to combine those two and compare into the budget that stays there. Transportation grant will run with the balance of that, mainstream law, not really received that. For special ed, here's where I think that will, um, you will get another hundred, another one. With a seven fifty, we've adjusted plus the extraordinary, a hundred is eight fifty, I'm thinking we'll probably get one point one million or so, that part of the, that we're doing. So we haven't received any drivers yet, that will come after year end. Tuition reduction, I'm told by the state what number to put in here, the state will pay, um, pay other schools for, um, adult, for, and, and if an adult comes to the gym, they look to technical center, and, and the state will pay on behalf of that adult, and then kind of, and then. Vocational, transportation reimbursement, expecting the same half of that. Education debt, one hundred and forty-eight thousand. The sale of assets, sixty-five thousand, that was the sale of our state bus fleet. And then, um, the rest of this food service, we don't really do a lot with the rest of the facilities, we have a food service there, um, our long-term debt, student activities, I don't usually break this report to show you, but I want to go over the, um, some fellowship fund in there, our C grant, which is our school program, and then some other grants, we now, we have a leading innovative schools grant this year, our rallying grant, our Nellie Manning grant, and our building campus, and we're there. And then the next set, the next credit report is our budget to actual, so this will include those that we include tonight. And so we have till the end of June for building maintenance, for educational supplies, and teachers' salaries and benefits, which July audits will include. So it's, at this point, we can take a look at, you know, a line item compared to budget, so this will be pretty accurate when you round out. I'm not sure I have to go over this in much detail at this point.
Is there a summary of everything? I think somewhere in the sheet, in the budget to actual.
The total?
Is the kind of the total tally?
Yeah, there is, as we get going, I just wanted to look at, um, special ed, and he said we are over budget of four hundred and eight thousand dollars. And some, you know, a lot of times in a category, there is a amount remaining in the total, but a lot of that at this point is health insurance, so some of the health insurance that's definitely to be put into most teaching categories. So looking at page eleven, our budget, nine million seven hundred and two, which matches actual enclosures, so this has our net remaining at a hundred and four thousand dollars. Any questions?
How many buses did we sell for sixty-five thousand dollars? Just curious, any idea? Say, three?
And at the end of that, I think, but only two that were, um, were in private condition.
The balance sheet, this is the first time we've seen this display, right?
I think we've probably seen it before, but we haven't had a regular assessment. We don't really, I don't do a lot of this balance sheet during the year, most of it is, is stuff that I do weekly, and it's just to show you, right? And then next month, well, you know, we'll just be closing in on that year end, and all of your food service contract, and our accommodations for meal prices.
Thank you, Kathy.
Any questions for Kathy?
Uh, maybe next one. I just don't wanna think about it, but, compared to the annual report.
I don't know, I don't know, high school or whatever.
Okay, we're gonna go back to Ed for an addendum to the high school report?
Yes, because I just found out about this today, like, at around three o'clock. Um, we had our kids come back from a congressional artist show in Montpelier, and Alicia Gendrow won the Congressional Medal for her painting, and Victoria Verber won the People's Award, which is voted by everybody at the, at the Congressional Art Show, so we consistently medal and win awards over there every year, but if anybody has a chance to see Victoria's painting down on the gym wall going out into the athletic lobby, it's of a girl in profile, her sister, and it is one of the best paintings we've had.
I saw it the other night.
Yes, it's in her ankles.
That's a really cool piece.
So our art department is really excellent. And Alicia's was, uh, yeah, it was personal. So I just wanted to add that because I've forgotten to write it down.
Kirk, you have something on the meeting for your sir?
They do not. Unfortunately, they, the meeting was the same night as the canceled Vermont State Music Parade, which I feel like I have to say was very poorly handled. I mean, they, all the kids were there, all the buses were there, all the parades were there, all the people were there, and ten minutes before the parade, they can't.
Yeah, I was gonna do it. No calls or anything, any other action I did. So it circles me back to public communication. Carol, is this something new, or is this the same old issues about audits and budgets?
Well, I was wondering if you consider, um, inviting the auditor, um, and I've been told that, you know, you don't get shocked if there's material weaknesses, what you wanna do is you wanna, um, look at, are they still there the next year? And you have some material weaknesses that have been, been in the audit, audits for a few years, and, and differences on, you know, the finding out from the auditor themselves, you know, when they release, what is, why are they so excessively late? Because so far Superintendent O'Brien has, has been his own, you know, balance, check and balance, and it would be nice, since there they, for the audits, to have them present.
So your suggestion, your, your question, would you consider inviting him, the auditors, to the June meeting?
I think we'd be more successful submitting questions.
Would there be a charge for that?
Most assuredly.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, lay a next sentence. That's, I figured we would.
So, so you're telling me, well, I just decided, you're telling me if I have old stuff, you're not answering it anymore, because you just said, are you gonna rehash things? Um, you didn't use my exact words, but.
If you, if it was just gonna be the same, you know, questions that have already been addressed, I know you've been given reams of paperwork, then I wasn't gonna spend a lot of time.
I haven't been addressed, though. I have not been given a clear, um, conversation, understanding between, um, the actual budget surplus or deficit, and the swing where it comes back to the auditors, I meant auditors, but the proposed budget in two years. Um, you know, for, for example, you just have a, um, a two thousand thirteen deficit of over six hundred thousand dollars, and yet, um, the proposed revenues, the estimate, um, was four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and, but anyways, I recalculated my numbers, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna give them to you again. I have included you guys in my emails, I'm still not getting answers, and so, yeah, I do need to come to the school board. Um, so these are my three questions that haven't been answered, Tom O'Brien's response, which, I think, and, and then my recalculation.
Is this something we've already, have you already sent this to us?
No, not the, not the new numbers.
This email was not sent to us. Thank you.
Yes, right, because I was going to read.
I don't need it if I told you.
Well, you need to read the, the numbers, you can run away if you want.
Okay. I, I just, I'd rather not take something that I already have, because I've read it once, and I don't wanna read it again.
Okay.
But what you're saying is, what's on this piece of paper you've already sent to us?
No, I, I gave the board numbers in November, and then I was corrected with the formulation, then Superintendent O'Brien, I gave you numbers the last time, Superintendent O'Brien did a formulation for me, and so I'm, I'm just trying to make sense of it, and I think I have the right to do that, and, but now the numbers still don't agree.
Can you first answer my question? Is what you passed out tonight new, or is it something I already have?
The recalculation is no.
So what's on that piece of paper is something I don't have? Yes, or no?
Right, the back two.
Okay, may I have a copy?
Yes.
It has nothing to do with the content, I just, if it's, if it's already in my inbox, Carol, I don't want to read it again, because I've already read it once. You see what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, but I'm having a difficulty getting answers since 2010. If you wanna go through my emails, I have them now. And, no, not from you guys, from Superintendent O'Brien. I have only come to you guys because, um, I struggle with Superintendent O'Brien.
Have you taken Kathy up on her offer to sit down and look at things?
Neil, you know, I, I have a right to keep myself safe. You have an aggressive, um, administration, and, and in November, Neil.
I respectfully disagree.
Okay, you can, but you can't make me go somewhere.
Of course not, nope, I, I, absolutely not. If you feel unsafe for some reason.
In November, I was very detailed, from when the Vermont School Board Googled my husband's name, and I went through order events where my husband was attacked, and I'm not.
No, absolutely, we know, again, that's, that's a different issue than what you're bringing up here.
I'll let it go if you, if you'll stop pushing me to go into a private conversation, because I do have valid reasons of why I won't meet with Superintendent O'Brien alone. Um, this is, um, this is difficult for me, but my, my connection with intoxication, um, and hurting other people's life isn't good drunk driving, it's where, um, fear. And the one thing I have, I, I went to Superintendent O'Brien, um, when the, when the newspaper came out, and I went and sat with Mr. Welly, um, and I keep hearing a lot of, um, you know, working with the children and letting them know, you know, last, 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 um, sorry, um, last month, it was Mr. Welly said wiggle your toes before you get in a car. And so my question, with all respect, um, no one has really dealt with publicly, and, and here was a boy putting his, his, um, his, you know, emotions and his facts before, you know, um, that there was fear that caused someone within the family to call nine one one twice. And that concerns me with, um, with part of the, the incident with Mr. Welly.
Uh, we're not gonna talk about a personnel incident in open view, it's, it's already been handled, it's, that was last year. I know, I don't understand why you're bringing it up again.
Because it has never been talked about, the whole idea of intoxication connected with, with fear, um, and, and it's real, I've, I've raised three kids, and, and who come from that type of setting. I'm not standing in judgment, but it is a message that children need to hear, even, even equally with, um, the whole idea that you shouldn't get in a car, but you should never compromise yourself with alcohol, that creates fear, um, to the point where, where, you know, someone dials nine one one.
Carol, this is completely a confidential personnel matter. I understand your concern, but we can't go there in a public venue. This is executive session material entirely.
I just.
I don't know how to answer to your concerns, because they are not, unfortunately, and respectfully, not appropriate for this venue here. I understand what you're saying, it's been said in the paper, all fine and good, but...
But see, the, the thing with the appropriateness is, it's okay to talk about the intoxication and connection with drunk driving, that's what I'm saying, that's been something that has been, um, very open within the, the school board, and that's why I didn't say anything, you know, until last month, just kind of triggered me, um, when, when the whole idea of, well, think I'm wiggling.
when, when the whole idea of, well, think, I wiggle your toes before you get into a car. And that was something that Mr. Whibley had said, and, and the whole idea of, well, what do people need? Because we have, we have an epidemic out there. What do people need to do when they're intoxicated and they're about ready to cause fear in someone? How's that?
Is there any other public comment for tonight? Do we have a need for an executive session? Any other discussion items? So I'd remind everybody about the, Tom already did the issue meeting on Wednesday night, and our next regular board meeting on the 10th. And don't forget to vote tomorrow at your polling place, and we'll be adjourned.